Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. At this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, August the 5th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasur.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Sewery.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, July 15, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have two pages of wastewater claims in the amount of $158,937.95. Floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the wastewater claims dated August the 5th, 2019, in the amount of $158,937.95.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting, and we have no new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:02 PM. We will convene the Board of Public Works and Safety meeting within the next five minutes. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, and at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, August the 5th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Dave Harrison.
Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasur.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Sewery.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, July 15, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
I have none.
No questions, comments, or corrections. I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. This evening, Board, we have 17 pages of corporate claims in the amount of $884,897.31. The floor is open for any questions or comments.
I have none.
I have none.
No questions or comments. I'll ask for motion to approve the corporate claims dated August the 5th, 2019, in the amount of $884,897.31.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. We have no unfinished business to carry over from the previous meeting. Under new business this evening, we have several items. The first item is handicap parking application for Gregory Tapscott. Now, defer to the clerk. Any anything special on this one, Dan?
No, just standard. Recommended approval.
All the paperwork has been submitted, and I'll open it up for any Board comment.
Is this for 2019 or 2020?
You know, I think 19. That's what I would guess, because I think this ends on December 31st of the year issued, so that would be for the remainder of this year.
Okay, thank you. It's just the form says 2020, that's why I asked.
Well, I think the one I've got is crossed out, the 2020 up here.
It looks like it's highlighted, like a copy highlighted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I have none.
And I'll ask for motion to approve the parking, handicap parking permit for Gregory Tapscott.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Handicap parking space for Align Life. Dear Board, Align Life came forward and requested a handicap parking spot to be placed in front of their business. They're located at 316 Main Street. Align Life provides therapeutic services to several patients, many whom have, may have disabilities. This is a very good request, and upon approval, we will have DPW install a sign and paint the proper markings. I think they came in, didn't they talk to you, Dan?
Someone called me on the phone, and they're actually a patient of the chiropractor, and the doctor recommended chiropractic services. And the issue is, it's a handicap in a wheelchair, and the closest spot is at Third and Main, and they're actually down at the other end at Fourth and Main, and pushing somebody through the snow. I can understand, you know, where they were going with this, and I think it's a good idea.
Comments or questions for Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the marking of a handicap spot in front of 316 Main Street. Promotion of Philip Lamping to commercial driver.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Next up is a permission to close a sidewalk for a short film. Do you have this, Dan?
Yeah, that was actually yesterday, I think.
Can you read that into the record?
I am writing on behalf of GSC Entertainment, Foxwind Films, and Pale Moonlight Cinema in regard to filming of a short film, Athlete's Foot. The short film, we are seeking permits to film on location of Beach Grove on Main Street on August 4, 2019, from 2 until 8:00 PM. Production would be occupied, the sidewalk space outside of 417 Main Street, and the sidewalk space directly across the street of 418 Main Street. The production would require prohibiting parking in the spaces directly in front of these buildings for, during the filming period above. Also submitted is a COI naming City of Beach Grove as the insured. Thank you, Greg Cox.
I was under the impression that they were going to do something tonight, but evidently I was wrong, so I know, as Dan alluded to a minute ago, they were down there yesterday, and there wasn't really any traffic down there, because it being Sunday, and I didn't see any problems being caused down there by anybody, and any blockage or anything, so I think just for the record that we just want to let everybody know that this happened, and they did file insurance, naming the city as additional insured, but I don't think we'll take any action, because it was yesterday, so we'll just note that in the record. So, we'll move on to the next item, and it was a similar situation. They had their annual block party on, in the alley between 13th and 12th, north of Alton. They've been doing this for...
This was 16 years, I believe.
16 years. Chris was a little late on the notice, and he apologized for it, but I didn't see any problem with it. I mean...
We approved it in the past, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. So, I just wanted, it had, they did it Saturday. They've never had a problem down there, and I don't see any reason to, to say no, so I told him to go ahead and do it, and Brad delivered, I think they delivered barricades down there.
Barricades and two trash cans, and we appreciate that.
So, I just want to put that out there for, to let everybody know that that did happen, and so... The next order of business, and I'll defer to City Legal on this, concerns parking agreement with Carrington Woods Community Association and the City of Beach Grove. I'll defer to City Legal for explanation.
Yeah, so Carrington Woods has had some issues getting emergency vehicles back into their area, and we don't service or own the streets, so I think what they're asking us to do is, is to issue parking citations and put up signage on prohibited parking. Is there some here from the Board tonight, from Carrington? Yeah, do you have anything to add to that, sir? I know that there's some, okay. So, in any event, I've worked closely with their council, named Steve Bushman. He's a reputable lawyer in town, and we worked together on this, and I recommend approval.
Chief, do you have any comment on it?
It would just have to be listed in the ordinances, that that would be covered. For us to write any kind of violation, the other street's not.
We're talking about the condominiums, they're at 9th and Grove Wood, not the...
Right, on Carrington.
There's a state.
Yeah, not the Carrington.
Right.
I think one of the things that I was, wanted to make sure is, they, they own the roads, so they would be required to maintain them, and do all of the paving and all that. I don't want to take that on. I don't think we should. So, I, that's in there as well, so I don't know of anything else, and...
We pick up their trash.
We already do that.
Right, we don't, we don't remove the snow, though, and we don't, we don't do anything.
Is that all we do, Brad? Trash?
Yeah.
Yep. So, that won't change.
Okay. Any comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the agreement between Carrington Woods Community Association, Inc., and the City of Beach Grove.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. The last order of business was not on the agenda. I didn't get it till this afternoon. The previous meeting, we approved the community center to hire two part-time people, and they've come forward this evening with a letter. I got it this afternoon, and I'll have, can you read that into the record?
The Hornet Park Community Center would like to hire the following people as program assistants starting on August 7, 2019. These part-time positions paid will start at $10.71 per hour, and the applicants will not work more than 29 hours per week. All applicants have passed the prerequisites for holding this position. Tasha Ramey and Miranda Radcliffe.
Thank you, Dan. Any comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the hiring of Tasha Ramey and Miranda Radcliffe at the community center, part-time, not more than 20 hours, 29 hours per week, at $10.71 per hour.
I'll make the motion.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye and the motion carries. Thank you. That concludes new business this evening. Comments from Board members?
I don't have anything.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Meeting, meeting is adjourned at 6:19 PM. Our City Council will convene this evening at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this, tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. At this time, we will convene our Common Council meeting for Monday, August the 5th, 2019. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left. Jim Brooks, Council at Large.
Dave Harrison, District 5.
Dan McMillan, Clerk of Treasur.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Peter Maschary, District 2.
Elizabeth Lamping, District 1.
Chris Duffer, District 3.
Kevin Day, District 4. Buddy Templeton has an excused absence this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. At this time, I would like, I would ask for a moment of silence in memory of the folks who lost their lives this weekend in El Paso and in Dayton, Ohio. Thank you. This evening, Council, I'd like to introduce Marcia Dorsey. Marcia has came forward asking to serve the city in any type of capacity, and you have a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. You have three appointments, and DMD has two. One of your appointments resigned earlier this year, Dawn Whalen. So, I asked Marcia if she might be interested in serving, and she said yes. And I want her to come in front of you tonight and introduce herself, and then later on in the meeting, then we, under new business, we will vote on her appointment. So, Marcia, come on up. Can I stand here with you?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I want to thank Mayor Buckley first for inviting me to be able to come and be before the City Council, and all the wonderful things you do for the community. I am a lifetime resident of Beach Grove. My grandfather came here three generations ago and designed and built the Ascent Lane Division for Indiana Oxygen on Bethel Avenue. My daughter and I both graduated, my father from Beach Grove High School, and I have one daughter. She is actually a UFI graduate and has served with the Sheriff's Department for 25 years as a 911 Communication Officer. My husband and I have been married 52 years, and have lived in Beach Grove our whole life, and really have enjoyed part of the community in any way we can. I work at the University of Indianapolis. I've been there 32 years. I am the Special Vincent Decorating Coordinator for the college, and I have graduated from Indiana Northern College, from Associate Degree in Decor decorating from Cleveland College, and have an honorary degree from the University of Indianapolis. And I certainly am interested in working with the community. I served on the library board. I'm a member of the First Christian Church, and have served in many other ways in Beach Grove, and I'm a Tri-Kappa and a Beta Sigma Phi member. So, I hope that I can accomplish things for you, and I hope that possibly you will appoint me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any questions?
I don't think so.
Got any boos?
Pretty qualified.
Am I excused, sir?
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Marcia. Also, I, she said, I'm going to, she said, I'm gonna, I'll talk to the council, then I, I, we're gonna leave to meet my husband, John, at, at Napoli's for dinner. And I said, well, I'll join you, too.
Well, you get done, come over. We'll, we'll all enjoy dinner, okay?
All right.
Thank you so much for listening to me.
All right.
Maybe we can just vote before she goes to dinner. Maybe we can vote before they go to dinner.
Oh, you know what? And if you approve me, we'll just all go to dinner.
Oh.
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll call you tomorrow.
Oh, good, thank you.
Next order of business, Council, is a reading of minutes and approval. You have two sets of minutes. The first is a regularly scheduled meeting, July the 1st of 2019. The floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections. If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. You have a printed copy of the minutes of the special meeting on Monday, July the 15th, 2019. Floor is open for any questions, comments, or corrections.
My packet has July 1st. I've got two sets of July 1st minutes.
One of them was handed.
Oh, we have one here. Oh, good, thank you. Thank you. Never mind.
Dennis, I'd just like to make a comment on this second set of minutes. People are gonna say that there's nothing in them, and they're almost correct in stating that. This meeting was executive meeting between the City Council and the RDC to talk about a proposed business that may be coming to Beach Grove, and they're, they wanted to remain anonymous in this, so it's, so we didn't divulge anything, just so the public knows.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'll ask for motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Counselor, public comments?
My name is Pam Staller. I live at 711 Churchman Avenue, Beach Grove. I just, I was looking at an ordinance, and part of our meeting agenda in order of business, according to the ordinance, we are supposed to be having reports from committees, boards, and commissions, and we haven't been doing that of late. I'd kind of like to see us go back to that. I would like to hear reports, especially from RDC, because they collect hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money, and we never hear what's going on with that money, what they're doing, the ebb and flow of funds there. I'd like to have a monthly report on that, and also, I'd kind of like to have a monthly report from the police. I'd like to know a little bit about what's going on in our town. So, if there's any way we could go back to the monthly reports from the different boards, committees, and commissions, I'd appreciate you considering that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who did not sign up that wants to speak?
Committee reports, ABC.
Good evening, everyone. So, today, we had one on the docket. It was an automatic renewal with no violations, and that was for CVS Pharmacy, store number 6583. That's all we had. We approved it for the year, and that's it. Any questions, comments, concerns? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
I did not hear from Greenscape. You should have compliance report in your packet, and same way with public safety. And the last one is financial. Dan?
I really don't have anything tonight. I'm in the process of working on the budget. I will have something on the website later this week with the bank balances and so forth, but we're well into the budget process.
Thank you.
One thing I did have, Dennis, and this is from Mark, is there any way, is Mark here now?
He's back there.
Is there any way we maybe, I don't know if it's available, get a listing of the addresses that got violations?
For compliance?
Yeah.
Oh, I, they should be public record.
Are they, would it, would it be public record?
I think you can request that, and if the opponent requests, they'd be released.
Okay, okay.
Any other comments on committee reports? If not, we'll move to unfinished business. Update from Todd Betron.
Thank you, Mayor, members of Council. So, tonight's update is that we did receive three very respectable bids in response to the request for proposal. Those are in the custody of Mr. Wiley, for reasons of keep them under the privilege and keep those also for you on a competitive negotiation. We've yet to do any negotiation. I think the cadence moving forward is to evaluate each of those three responses for the responsiveness related to the request for proposal. And with that, as mentioned previously in this chamber, a review committee with Mayor Buckley in coordination with the council, assembling a review committee to review those responsive, the responsiveness. And it's also my recommendation to you as the, as the council to consider having an executive session wherein each of the bidders would come in individually with a defined period of time, make their presentations to you as to why they believe they would be a proper fit as a partner with the City of Beach Grove, and wherein you can have a dialogue with those representatives, asking them questions of your own as, as you see fit as it relates to the request for proposal. So, it was a busy day Friday. I know at the Jackson Lewis office, receiving those documents, and the inquiry that I have fielded since my last update to you. So, we've made significant progress, and I will yield for any questions that you may have at this point.
I've always got a question for you, Todd.
I would be disappointed if it were not, so...
Question being, and I don't care which of the three, was these three companies we started off with original, or are these new?
No, they're all three. So, the three, the three responses came from Citizens Energy Group, Aqua Indiana, and Indiana American.
Okay, and most important question of all, did any of them exceed the appraisal price?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yes. Yes, indeed. So, what we need to do is...
Was it between 10 and 15, or 15?
To the range. Narrow me down. It's, it'll be important that once we evaluate the appraisal offer, or I'm sorry, the purchase offers, how those impact rates, and I've not been able to break those down, because everything shows up in rates, either good or bad, and so we'll match those, and as I've described to you before, and even in the request for proposal, we require them to demonstrate to us what do, what will rates do over a, a defined period of time, held against what your current rate trajectory would be if, by your continued ownership, the commission's order that prescribes what rates will do on the wholesale treatment agreement over the next 10 years.
So, would those companies be able to negotiate rates for Beach Grove that are different than their other companies, or other customers, I mean?
So, through the regulatory process, so if Citizens, and I have not, I don't have possession of the responses, but let's take Citizens as an example, chances are, they would, they would just match what the current rate schedule is for wastewater customers in Marion County, their current, their current customer base. Indiana American, on their water side, we're only talking specifically wastewater, on the water side, they have a, what they call a single-rate tariff. On wastewater, it would be individualized to Beach Grove, influenced by that approved order that sets a trajectory for wholesale treatment over the next 10 years. And the same is true of Aqua. Whatever their rates would be is negotiated based here. So, it would be individualized, specific to Beach Grove, and we can certainly negotiate that, and how that is approved at the commission, if we get that far. Other questions?
Did any of them answer the 1.5 million, as far as where, how that is going to be handled?
Yeah, so that wasn't a specific question in the RFP. That's a specific question for this group to identify. Now, we can negotiate a payment lieu of taxes, which also shows up in rates. We can negotiate what is in the rates, can we take money over time on the purchase price, things of that nature. So, we still have a lot of conversation that would take place, but we didn't specifically say, how will you solve this operating gap that might otherwise show up? That's really for us to, and I can help this body to, to rectify. So, it was a good day, depending on what side of the, the project you want to be on, but we had three very respectable bids, and we'll evaluate their responsiveness, and I'll yield the mayor and his timing as to the, the review committee, the assembling thereof, and then I, I'm here to work through that process, and then your timing on the executive session for those individual... executive session for those individualized presentations.
Is there a timeframe right now, as far as these companies that made the bid, that they need to know?
I don't know if they're, typically they don't prescribe that. They wouldn't want to keep that purchase price for, you know, in perpetuity, but we, you control the timing. They've been very patient, as you know. We, we always reserve the right to amend the timeline, to gather additional data, to make sure we've got a good project, or, you know, a good, good process. But we don't have a drop dead date where we'd have to respond and say, we want company X.
I think also, they have asked for more time, too.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to rush this too quickly, obviously. There's a lot of discussion that needs to take place, again, coordinating with you as a council and the mayor's office. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you all.
Thank you.
That finishes unfinished business under new business. Council, you've had citizens approach you this evening about serving on the BZA, the, that's a, that's an appointment that ends at the end of the year, and will be reappointed by the council in January. So at this time, I'm, I'll ask for any type of motion to approve or deny, or-
I'll make a motion to appoint Marcia Dorsey to the BZA.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Let's go to Napoli.
Motion to adjourn. Next up, council, is a presentation by the FOP Lodge 86, 2020 budget. And before they come up and talk, I will tell you that we're going through some contract negotiation, but there has nothing, nothing has been signed. They're going to come to you in good faith and talk to you about what they would like to see for 2020. So I'll yield to the, please.
Good evening. Nathan Rinks, Sergeant with the Beatrove Police Department, FOP representative. Again, I think like the mayor stressed, we're still, this is still just a tentative agreement, has not been voted on by my membership, but we're, it seemed to have got pretty good positive response. I don't know, have you guys been sent the financials of it? I know that's probably the most biggest concern. I think, Liz, did you have a copy? Did anybody else get copies of the financials? Okay, I can go over some of the numbers for you. There's some other languages in the contract that's changed, some things about drug testing, a few things like that that have been added in. Probably don't need to go over those here tonight. I can, we'll get you a copy of the contract, so you guys can look at them yourselves, kind of read the language, because I don't want to have all of you falling asleep in here. For the financials, I apologize, one of our officers, who's one of our reps, was unable to make it today, and he's done all the legwork on the contract, so it kind of left me with 24 hours notice. I do have the numbers on here, you have to bear with me, because they're on my phone.
Do you want my copy?
Uh, sure.
It's nice.
I've got, I mean, I've got them.
I know you do.
I just have them on my phone. So the four keys that were changed in our contract through negotiation, first of all, our longevity calculation, we agreed to a slight increase. It's going to be a step increase over the three years of the contract. For the first year of the contract, it's just a half percent increase, I believe. The total increase to the budget for the whole department would just be $10,340. Yeah, it's going to a 4% longevity rate, and then four and a half in year two, and five in year three. But for the first year of the contract, it would just be a $10,374 increase. These numbers have already been sent to Dan as well. We did negotiate, one of the issues we've been having in our department is supervisor pay has been pretty stagnant for, I'd say, at least a decade, if not longer. And you start running into an issue where we don't have guys wanting to go and take supervisor positions, because it'll change their schedule. So we're trying to increase to start, there's becoming more and more responsibilities for supervisors as things change. So we're trying to keep ahead of that and keep making it attractive. One issue we're going to have over the next four or five years is we've got at least six, seven guys that today could hand in their retirement papers tomorrow, and they're all supervisors. So we've got to be able to continue to have steps and have the ability to attract young guys and attract our top officers wanting to take on supervisory positions. The total for that increase is $16,000. Specialty pay increases. So we did negotiate, something we did in the last contract is, we did slight pay for different specialties, like if you're an FTO, if you're an instructor, or if you're on the SRT SWAT team. So we did increase those. There'll be a step increase to all of those over the life of the contract. I can send you the more specifics of it, but here would be, SRT would be $1,000 a year, and then it would go up $250 each other, additional year of the contract. FTOs, field training officers, that's what we call them, and instructors, state certified instructors. Now, all instructors, they have to go through a one-week training, and they have to maintain their certification every three years by conducting X amount of training. So these are the guys that go and do our continuing education training throughout the department. Their pay will go to $750, and field training officers as well will go up to $750. And there will be a $250 increase each year of the contract, so it would top at $1,250, I believe. For that, it's a $9,750 increase. And then, one thing we negotiated that we talked about, that's kind of a new, but it's something us and Fire both agreed is important, is to try to find a way that's not a huge monetary gain, and it also doesn't impact the pension base, it doesn't impact anything like that, it's got more of a long-term. We talked about doing something that a lot of companies do, a lot of departments and cities do, was a 457, our investment account, match. It's only up to $300 a year, and we even looked, there's, not everybody in our department invests in it yet. I wish they all would, but, but they don't. So the total increase to that, if this department, the city matches just $300 a year, to those who participate in the 457, would be $10,500. So the total for this year on a new contract would be $46,624, which I believe is probably one of our lower first-year contract totals we've had in probably the last, I would say, the last two or three contracts.
And the current contract ends at the end of this year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So this would be for the beginning of 2020?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and you said Dan has these figures?
Yeah, we sent him the figures, was it July 8th?
Yeah.
Somewhere around there. Yeah, it's been about a month. I know you wanted to make sure that you're staying ahead for the budgets, so we were, we tried to get through the negotiations as quickly as possible to respect, you know, what Dan needs to do, and he's up against, it's like a little bit of a gun, too, so.
Thanks.
Do you guys have any other questions about it?
I have a question. Has Court Frager, was he involved in the negotiations at all?
No.
Okay. Second question is, Dan, can we afford all of this?
I don't know until I start putting the pieces together.
You got to ask now.
The police's, for the most part, I thought was within reason. You know, like, I want to hear the fires. One question I do have, though, is what was the overall raise for the police department?
On the 2%?
Is that what it is, 2%?
Yeah, that was, yeah, that's what we agreed to.
And that's what we've been doing.
Right.
Year after year.
And we've tried to, you know, we could, I know there's other agencies that fight tooth and nail over X percents, but we've tried, at least in that, to realize, you know, the city tries, and it has a responsibility to also raise everybody else's salaries throughout the, throughout the city as well. So we try to be respectful of that, of that, too. But also still try to keep us up, you know, keep pace with other agencies, you know. Right now, we do have a higher starting salary than some, but you start falling around, really nobody in, in police or the fire agency, it's usually not the starting salary that they care about, because it's a three-year process going through to go to top pay, and we're kind of, we're in line with some. IMPD blows just about everybody away around here in their top pay, but that's always going to be like that. They're the biggest city around, so, but we try to at least keep within earshot of them. I think that's important. I think most other agencies do, too. I don't think anybody's ever gonna, I don't know, maybe Carmel sure does spend a lot of money, so maybe someday they might try to pay more than what IMPD does, but I just don't know that that's ever going to be foreseeable. But we at least try to keep in earshot, because it's, it's a competitive, it's competitive out there now, and it's really hard to get guys here. I was just thinking about today, you know, when I went through mine just 12 years ago, there was probably 200 guys there at U-Indy, trying out for two spots. Even three years after that, in 2011, I was laid up all that summer when we did our process, and I know I did, we had 20 guys go to background, which we haven't had 20 guys go to background in years. And even then, we had, I did 10 of the backgrounds, and we probably had seven or eight guys that we had to pick from, that were like, these are all really good guys. And I know they were having a hard time trying to decide who they were picking then, and in the last five or six years, that's really started to change. I even, talking to some IMPD guys that do their recruiting, they're starting to struggle, even though they pay what they pay, and they're hiring 40 and 50 guys sometimes, they're just, it's kind of a struggle around. There's a lot of, I've sent you guys some links about what's kind of the trends nationwide. So I think it's important, as you guys have all these years, to keep pace and to keep us in the market, and I think this contract reflects a willingness on the city to, to at least keep us moving in the right direction. Any other questions? Did you want to write that check now, or do you want me to come get it tomorrow?
Well, I'll tell you what, I was real good with you guys' budget until Maurice sent me a second email and says, oh, I forgot the 200,000 of vehicles, so, but it was already there, so.
Thanks. I've got them, I have them on my phone.
Thanks, Nathan.
That's why I printed them.
All right, now we'll hear from Fire Department Local 416.
Thank you, Mayor, council. I'm Brett Hannity with the Beach Grove District, Local 416. Like Nathan was saying, we tried to go through this process, we've been working on it since January. We want everything to be reasonable and not try to break the bank, so on the city's part. We've negotiated with the mayor, the longevity increase that staggered with the three and a half, four and a half, and the five, I guess it's four, four and a half and five. We went through, we got the 2% raise that he told us. Nick has all these numbers written down, I'll let him cover those with us once I give you everything here. So the longevity increase, the increase in our holiday pay, which, that makes our budget a little bit higher of an increase this year than the police, but the police were already getting the holiday pay that we weren't. Oh, yeah, and the 457 match, that's another thing that we sat down to try to negotiate and come up with a reasonable amount, that we felt would be worth trying to get more of our members involved in that program, and without putting too much stress on the city. Our lawyers have looked at the contract today, gave us some recommended changes. Once I make those changes, I'll forward it to Craig Wiley for him to look at. I'll let Nick cover all the changes from the dollar amounts. He has the spreadsheets, he's the DXL guru, so.
So just kind of piggybacking off of Nathan, that's with parity, that's, we put the parity clause in there, we're trying to match these positions as much as possible. They're two inherently different positions, but we are trying to, to match the compensation and benefits to the exact same. Our longevity pay increase needed for that, that half a percentage is $9,633, based on our years of service, and actually, we have a member that is retiring in January, so that number, based on his 26 years coming off the books, for next year's, $9,633 less $3,500. So his alone is $3,500, that's going to be coming off the books, so we're looking at, what is that, $5,500 instead of the 600, 6,000?
$61.33.
$61.33. So that changes that number a little bit, that, that was a new thing, him putting in for his retirement. I kept it on my actual spreadsheet for total numbers, just because he hasn't officially left yet, so we kept it on there. But good to note, the position pay increase, same with the police, we've added $1,000. We're asking our, all of our positions, our chauffeurs, our officers, to do more work than they were. That number has stayed stagnant for a very long time, so when you factor in inflation, the $3,500 that they were getting 15 years ago is not the same $3,500 that they'd be getting now. So we're, move that up. The 457 employer match needed for us, $11,400. Again, that is if 100% of our employees put in up to the match. So that matches 50 cents for every dollar. So the employee would have to put in $600 a year to get the 300 from the city. Not a huge hit to the budget, but it pays dividends exponentially for our employees and down the road, when they go to retire, they have something outside of their pension that they can pull from in a, in a different way. So then that brings our, these are why our numbers are a little bit different, and ours is higher, is the holiday pay compensation. The police have been getting time and a half for their holiday. We have not, we have just been getting a flat rate of 110 for the member that works the 17 hours of a holiday. So since we're 7:00 AM to 7:00 AM, on Christmas Day, you're working 17 hours of that 24-hour shift, and then the shift that, let's say, works the shift before that holiday, at midnight, they technically start their holiday of Christmas, so they get seven hours as well. That number used to be $55. So comparing apples to apples, the police, police are definitely compensated, and it's a, it's a fair compensation, $55 for a holiday is, is not very much compensation. So that total need is $25,500. Again, that looks a lot higher, because that's a number that we'd have to put in completely to our budget. So the total needed for us would be $64,533, again, less that $3,500 from our retiring member. So are there any questions that we might be able to ask? It's not much outside of what, yes, sir?
My question is parity. Every year, after the budget's passed and adopted and everything else advertised, it comes back and one of them say, well, we didn't get this, and we didn't get that. So I guess I'm asking the union reps for the police and the fire to get together and make sure everybody's on the same page, so it don't come back before this council at a later date, and, you know, because it causes trouble every year.
Absolutely, and we don't want, we don't want to cause that. We've had meetings with the FOP, I think we're up to three now, currently, where we've sat down with them. Again, there are things that, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that everything matches perfectly, because they get SRT, they get, they get things that we don't, and, and we get things that they don't, because they're two, two different positions. But as far as what you're referring to with the meal allowance roll-in, that was something that we had written in our contract, and in the parity, that's something that had to be done, because our base salary could not be higher than theirs. Again, that's, that's probably a miscommunication on our part, but that's how the contract was written, for it to be done that way. So we have done everything we can to make sure that that's not going to be the case again.
Okay, and that's what I'm assuming, I'm working on this budget with them, ideas in mind, that you guys are completely happy with what each other's getting, and there's not going to be any fallout at a later date on it.
We went through it, and I think, actually, Nick and Officer Frankel went through, they sat there with their computers up and went through all the lines in the contract, and made sure that language that needed to match matched, and that where it affected salary of it matched, and then everything else, we agreed there was some stuff that's just too specific to them and too specific to us, and it would be a bad one.
And I agree with that, and before, I've worked with you guys on it, but next year, you're going to have a new person sitting in this seat, and I want to not to cause them any more problems than what's absolutely necessary, and I think this should be worked out ahead of time, and I hope I can come up with every penny you guys are asking for, I don't know yet.
Well, that's why we're here. We, we don't- We, we don't, we don't want to, the city fails, we fail, we don't want to cause any issues, we want, we don't want headaches either, unlike, just like you guys don't. So, there's any questions, feel, yes, sir?
So, when that first year Nathan had a figure of approximately 46K, what, do you have a, an overall figure in that first year?
Again, ours is 64,000 because of that holiday pay, 25,000 holiday pay that doesn't need to be put into their budget, because they're already receiving that, that benefit. So, ours is higher of 64,533. Again, splitting hairs, less $3,500 from that member that's retiring, so, but we'll just stick with the 64,500.
Thanks.
Anything else? Any questions, feel free to reach out to us, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. If you remember, last year, the council had a concern about an agreement being signed, and then it was brought to the council saying, oh, by the way, this is what it's going to cost this year, they wanted to come in front of you before anything was signed to let you know what the estimated costs are going to be. So, they've done that. And there's a couple of other things in this agreement that are in there that are very, very important. One is, there's language in the contract for mental health screening for police officers, and there is language in the fire department contract to test for thyroid cancer and other types of cancer associated with fighting fire. Those are in there. And as a matter of fact, those are called out in state statutes, so we are obligated to do that for these people, and Jim knows better than anybody sitting up there that the hood that these guys wear when they fight fire is going to have to change. So, we're going to have to deal with that as well, probably next year. So, those are important things in this agreement, non-category one, that, yes.
So, as, as you go through the agreement with both departments, and we look at this first year, and of course, Dan's here to see how that fits into the budget, have you extrapolated and looked at years two and three and see how much the increase in the budget would be, and whether you think the city will have sufficient funds from whatever source to support that?
The first two years, but I'm working on the third year.
Okay.
Also, another important item in this agreement, there calls, there are calls for no additional employees for the fire department. It does call for two, and this is very important that you hear this, it calls for two new police officers, only if the school district passes a referendum and they agree to pay 100% of the cost for the police officer. They want to do a referendum, and they want to put two police officers in the school full-time. Okay, that's fine, I, I support that, but they have to pay for whatever, 100% of the cost. Other than that, the, the city would not have an obligation to pay.
So, would they be on the school's insurance, or would it be on the city's insurance?
It would be city's employees. We would, the city would have to tell the school district how much this costs.
Okay.
I've got a question on that. If that's the case, is this salary only, or is this their complete equipment?
It would have to be everything.
Everything, okay.
And it, it's very expensive for a one officer. But for tonight, I wanted to let you know that that's going to be in that agreement, and this is something that has been discussed between the superintendent, myself, and others on the safety committee, that we need to have police officers in the school. And this is, I think they're going to, whenever they decide to do the referendum, this is going to be part of that referendum. So, Jim, any comments? That was your history, I mean...
Well, as far as I'm concerned, I, the mental health screening and the cancer screening is something that's very much needed. Our officers, police officers and firefighters run across things every day that a normal person never, normal person never sees in their lifetime. I spent 30 years on a department, and there's a lot of things I hope I never remember, and I know there's police officers and firefighters out there that think the same thing. Being a officer, public servant is not an easy job, not just on themselves, but on their families, too. So, I think anything we can do to help our officers out, officers out, we have to do. Cancer is very strong in, in firefighters, and I know of Sabina's firefighters and Beach Grove firefighters, after they retired, have died from cancer, and, and the mental health screening, I know some of our police officers have came across some very gruesome things, and I commend them immensely for what they do.
Is anyone here from the Parks Board? We invited the Parks Board to come up and, and speak as well. Did, did Dan have anything prepared, do you know? I sent him a note to come up and, if he wanted to come up and talk.
He's in Germany.
He's not going to come up and talk. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll...
He's got his grandchildren in Germany.
Maybe we'll, the next council meeting, maybe he can come up and talk. All right, because we invited him to come up and, and share the thoughts of the Parks Board for next year as well. All right. All right. With that...
Hold on, Dan's calling me from Germany.
With that, that concludes new business. Council comments, beginning with my, on my left, Jim?
Well, I appreciate everybody showed up, and I will reiterate that we need to take care of our public servants, our police officers and firefighters, and we need to protect them the way they protect us. Thank you.
Thank everyone for coming, and, yeah, well said, Jim. And see, Dan, it wasn't that long a meeting.
No, that's great.
That's all I got.
Bud wasn't here.
It was that first comment. Saved us 15 minutes.
Second, Jim's comments. Thanks, everybody, for coming out.
Yes, again, thanks, everybody, for coming out. Well said, Jim. So, thanks for the budget presentations, we really appreciate that, so, thank you very much, have a good evening.
Hitty to Jim. No further comment?
I just want to thank everybody for coming. Thank you, thanks for showing up this evening, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. The meeting is adjourned? Thanks for coming.